Oh, she's here.
Oh, I'll hold it. We have.
Multi-purpose administrator.
Here you go. If you need, this is right here. Ms. Van, are you going to call the roll?
Welcome to the Twilight Zone. I'll call the roll if no one's going to call it.
Okay, one moment. We're still want to call the roll.
Here she is. Here's.
The place doesn't run without you.
We had a lot of hope on you.
Once you have a moment to settle, if you could call the roll, we'll be ready to do so. Thank you so much.
Steven Mayans.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Todd McLeod.
Here.
Deborah Rang.
Deborah Rang, email me. She has leukaemia and will not be attending.
Let the record reflect that Deborah Rang is not present. Andres Paradello.
Present.
Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase. Let the record refle-- Christopher Chase is not present. Scott Holtz. Let the record reflect that Scott Holtz is not present.
All right, next order of business is approval of the February 18, 2020 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Change is the correction. I'm not looking for motion for approval.
Moved.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Evening Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator. There are no cases that's been approved by the city commission since your last planning board meeting. However, case number, planning board case number 692V, the applicant was requested for continuance until the April 21st, 2020 meeting. And then the COVID revision case does not necessarily need to be continued because there was no advertising requirement associated with that. Staff will bring that back at a later date. But planning board case number 692V does need to be continued by staff, by, excuse me, by the board.
All right, any questions of staff? Next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That then brings us to declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by declaring that I had a telephone conference last week with the applicant and his counsel on planning cases, case numbers 1841, 1841A, 1842, 1842A. I will however be basing my decision in this case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Let me start on this side.
No. I also had an information session with the applicant regarding cases 1841, 1841A, 1842, and 1842A. But my decision tonight will be based on the information presented.
Anyone else have anything to say?
Yes, I had a, Andre Paradello, I had a conference call with the applicant regarding case number 1841, 1841A, 1842, and 1842A. And my decision will be based solely on the information presented tonight. I received an email from Mr. Oyer's office but was not able to get back in touch with him.
All right. We next move to the public hearing portion of our meeting on the swearing in of speakers. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you. Next on our agenda are continue cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to planning board case 1841. Are you going to proceed, Mr. Oyer, or please, please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. Ken Tuma, Thirteenth Design Kill Day Studios. My address is 610 Clematis Street, West Palm Beach, and I have been sworn in. Just give me one moment to get the PowerPoint going here.
We are having an interesting display on our viewers.
Is it better now? Just my face. Well, I'm glad somebody gets it.
Maybe we should shut it off and turn it on again.
Yeah, it looks very seasonal. There's a lot of green, a lot of green. There we go. Now that's clear. So that's great.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Tuma. Here today on behalf of Alliance, who's the developer for this subject property. This parcel of land is part of the family church property, which is located west of I-95. And I'll walk you through the whole project and a whole, but I want to give you just kind of a broad picture of what's happening. There's an existing church facility. That existing church facility has been approved since the late, early 1990s with a significant amount of square footage, even though approximately 22,000 square feet are actually built on the site. What Family Church is doing is they're selling the additional parcel of land off for potentially a multifamily development of 280 residential units. I have a fairly significant slideshow this evening. I am going to move through it very quickly because I recognize that we all want to be out of here. We do have a few items on conditions of approval that we do want to discuss at the end of this presentation. With that, I'd like to proceed as this is all one combined presentation for all the actions that are in front of you this evening. Okay, so very quickly, the, the subject slide, as you are aware, is located here, west of I-95, south of 45th. To the north is Spencer Lakes, and to the west are other residential communities along Village Boulevard. Here's the existing church site. The subject parcel, and the entire parcel is your subject parcel this evening, the 5.53 acres parcel here will be held by the church and remain within ownership of the church. And then they're selling this 21.03 and this 9.81 acre site for a total of about 30 acres of land that are for sale. So the church will be retaining 5.53 acres. Here is a view of the site plan, and you can see the proposed property boundary identified in yellow. The existing church, as I said a little bit earlier, is approximately 22,000 square feet. It has 250 parking spots on it, and it is two stories. But a little bit of history on that church, because it's important. The history on that church is it was originally approved for 163,500 square foot, two-story facility. It also had a 2,000 sanctuary. It had two Sunday school buildings, a 25,000 square foot family center, a 1,000-seat amphitheater. None of that was ever built. The church has been retained within this size for, for the last 20 to 25 years. So here's a view of the church site plan. On the right-hand side, where my mouse is, if you can see it, on the right-hand side is an existing parking lot. We're going to be relocating that parking lot over here towards the north. And those parking spots will then be built within the proposed site plan. We are retaining 250 parking spots. Your staff, Mr. Roach, and the rest of the team here have done a really good job, made some very good suggestions. They said, hey, you don't need all those parking spots. Can you make some of those paver, or make some of those grass spots? So we are making 49 of the 250 spots, grass parking spots, so it can absorb water. Those grass parking spots are identified in the location of where my mouse is, and there's approximately 49 of them. So here's a little bit of site data on the overall project, but the purpose of this slide is really to talk about drainage. Identified in front of you, blue, right here, is new lake area. You can see the background, the existing canal area. What we've added is additional significant lake area. It's north of eight acres. And the reason why we had to do that is because South Florida Water Management District, during their permitting process, actually assumed this to be compensating storage, meaning the land area, whoops, the land area was low enough that we actually needed to go ahead and compensate for that. So our client decided to dig out the additional area so they would have, be able to have the additional storage on the site. So the site shrunk by a fairly significant area from what's out there today. Those of you who drive down I-95, you probably see the RE/MAX balloon on the site before, so it's that same area. So, but what this does is, and I'll show you on another slide, but it separates from Spencer Lakes by 550 feet to the nearest residential or residential project. So a little bit more detail, and I am going to walk you through the site plan, but a little bit more detail. The Alliance believes in a significant amount of one-bedroom of units. There are 161 bedroom units on this project, 104 two-bedrooms, and only 16 three-bedrooms. They believe the marketplace for this is young professionals, and that's their goal, and that's what they're aiming for on that. And of course, that helps significantly with the design of the project. Now, a couple things. We stayed by all the city code for parking. If you're west of I-95, you're required to stay to the city code for parking. We did do that. The net parking is about 1.96 spots per unit. I've been in front of you before for other parking, or other apartment projects within the downtown area and east of I-95. And that request typically had been about 1.75 spots per unit. So we, I have a little bit more parking. I've had some really good suggestions as we went through this. You'll note one of our waivers is to actually reduce the drive aisle between the parking spots so we get more green space. So typically, that drive aisle is 24 feet. We've reduced it down to 22 feet to be able to get some additional land area in green space. So we do meet all the requirements of the parking and the guest parking requirements. Here's the 550 feet that identified a little earlier on the left-hand side of adjacent homes. So this is the site plan, and I'm going to walk through this in detail here. If you could, hopefully you could see my mouse and not my face right now. So the mouse in the right-hand side, we have a right turn lane. We're going to talk about that later because we do have a little disagreement with staff's position on that. We have a right turn lane coming into the site. Then you'll notice the nice brick paver entry feature coming in. On the right-hand side immediately is the leasing center, and then you have a pool behind it, and then you have the other cabana area. Now, you will note here is a walkway, and that walkway goes all the way around the outside of the lake, of the community, and becomes a walkway connection for the entire community. However, a portion of that on purpose is intended to be public. So as you walk from here all the way to the fishing pier is public space, meaning that anyone on the sidewalk can walk to that, have access to that facility. And then there's a public, and then there's a divider here where there is a fence or a public-private space, or a gate might be a better term to use, to separate those two uses. So as you pull into the community, the residential community that is gated, it gates right here, and the leasing is over here. Then as you pull through the community, you'll note that there are covered garages, and there are walkways all the way through the community, definitely different gazebos and view corridors. There's a dog park in this area, though it's covered up by the landscaping. So the dog park, and then there's a connection point between both the future residential project and the existing church site. That was important for all the, for all the stakeholders, for both the church, for our client, and for the city, to make sure that there was pedestrian connection between those two uses, as they want to be complementary to one another. Now, that will be an access, probably a fob access gate, but there will be a gate there between the two uses. And then as you move further north, you'll see the residential units, and then you'll have the secondary access point and emergency ingress point. Now, the proposed buildings are a little bit taller than what's allowed by code. The code is 30 feet in this area. We're requesting a waiver to go to 45 feet. They're four-story buildings, and each building is about 48 units, give or take. There's a couple different types, but in essence, there are about 48 units on, on the subject site. Now, let me jump to the next slide real quick. So one of the key things here is we, there is a significant amount of tree canopy on the site. There are very, there are several very large trees on the site, in fact, almost 40 feet wide. We are going to be relocating that canopy within the site as much as we can. Some of the trees can be saved, some of them can't, but we're trying our best to save as many trees that we, as we can. The area identified here in the screened-in area is an area where we're going to be relocating several of the large oak trees on purpose to provide a block to our nearest neighbors here to the west from the proposed parking lot. Now, when it comes to trees, you're going to see there's a, there's a couple waivers for trees. And the reason why those tree waivers are there is because we are relocating these canopy, and we're not able to actually install many of the other trees because of how wide these trees are. For a frame of reference, we have over 65,000 square feet of canopy, and the code requirement is around 30, 35. I don't have the number straight in my head, but it was less than 40. So here is the relocated oak trees here on the left-hand side of the screen with the church. And again, 24 to 40-foot canopy diameter, 14 to 24-inch DBH, very significant trees. We have had a tree mover out there who's an expert in this to make sure that we can do this, and they have worked diligently, and they will be preparing those trees to allow them to move appropriately. So here's a view of the, of the project coming into the site for the apartment site. On the right-hand side of your screen, this is Village, Village Boulevard in the foreground. And then you could see the trees have been faded away to allow you to see the form of architecture that's being proposed. On the right-hand side is the leasing office. On the left-hand side is the, is the first residential unit. You'll see in the background, you can see the gate, and then you notice the decorative pavers and the entrance and the architecture to the building. We have had a couple comments about the architecture, in particular, along the building that faces Village Boulevard. We have worked with our architect, and I'll show you some more detail to make sure that that elevation looks better than the elevations that are side to side, because that elevation fronts Village Boulevard, and that was an excellent comment that we received from your, your architect here. We, we are going to go ahead and change that, and I'll show you the upgrades in a couple minutes, but it's a very good point. When you have a building side by side, it doesn't matter as much. When you have this great building facing the road, you need to make sure you have good architecture on that side. This is a view of the walking path in the buildings, the four-story walking path. Here you can see the brick pavers and the litoral shelves and the green area. As you walk around, you can see the gazebos. This gives a good view of what the architecture and style of this community is going to look like. So as part of this project, there has been a significant amount of community outreach. We've worked diligently with, with both Spencer Way, Lakes, which is a community directly to the north, and also to the village's property owners association. I see Mr. Warnock, he's here. I know he has a letter of support to submit to the record, but we'll allow him to do that and go through the details of it. We've met at the church several times, and again, we've had several meetings with Spencer Lakes, too. So we've really tried our best to work through it. I give credit to our client. Both of them are in the audience. Mr. Geng and, and Mr. Hall are in the audience, and they have worked diligently with the neighbors to try to come together with a good solution. So I'm not going to walk you through everything, but there are, because of this application, the fact that it's an infill project on all intents and purposes, and three applications, there are a lot of things happening here from a zoning approval standpoint. I'm going to go big picture of what's happening. If you have questions, I can flip through all the slides. But basically, we're requesting a land use change, that land use change, allowing the church site to go from what it is today, single-family, to community-serving. And then we're asking for a rezoning that starts at, again, what it is today, part of an RPD, going to a community service plan development district. The reason for that is it allows it to be a church and nothing else to be developed on it. Your staff has provided some significant, some significant constraints as part of the development order. So that's the church component of it. There are waivers with the church. The waivers are, are supported by your staff. I'm going to walk you through a couple of the highlighted ones for the church site. The first one is there is a small encroachment into the setback. The property line that we have created, that new property line on the north side that separates the apartments and the residential, we're encroaching into that required setback by five feet. We created that property line. We understand what we did. We're requesting a waiver of five feet from that. Also, as part of that, we have since created, or we also have created a wall with landscaping separating the two. It'll be a five-foot fence. There's a waiver for that, coming up from four feet to five feet. And also some very nice columns, which was a request of the church, so that this separation becomes very nice and a unique separation, but still allows that pedestrian connectivity between the two. As I mentioned earlier, there are several waivers for landscaping. All those waivers from landscaping on the church are relative to the existing buffer along Village Boulevard, the proposed relocation of all the existing trees, and we have staff support of those waivers. On the residential plan development, that's where the apartments are going to go. The same things are happening. We're doing a land use change. That land use change is changing it from single-family to multifamily. We are then requesting to rezone it to residential plan development. The net density on the project is nine dwelling units an acre, a little bit more, nine dwelling units an acre. There are waivers associated with this, again, to implement this project. The first one was one I indicated a little earlier, is the fact we are requesting a waiver for height, that 15-feet differential, extra height, to allow that four-story to allow for more green space, and the fact that we are so far away from the nearest building. We believe, and your staff agrees with us, that it is appropriate use. We also have waivers for trees on the subject site. Again, same concept. We're relocating a lot of canopy. And also, we have waivers because we are required to do a buffer here adjacent to I-95, because it's part of our parcel. Well, it's difficult to do that buffer since it's in the water, so we are requesting a waiver from that. However, there is significant existing landscaping. For those of you who drive down I-95 every day, there is significant landscaping there. And again, we have your staff recommendation on that. Here are, there are a few other waivers about litoral shelves, going back to the theory that that lake was already constructed. We will be having litoral shelves on our side of the property line, or on, on the lake that we're building. And then the reduction in the parking aisle, as I said earlier, going from 24 to 22 feet, to have that fence separation with column between the church and the apartments to go from four feet to five feet. It's going to look a little nicer with the columns that are proposed. And then again, the tree reduction due to the canopy. And this identifies actually the amount that we have. The plans provide for additional 65,835 square feet of tree canopy. So it is, and the, and then the parking area landscape has been increased by 22,000 square feet above code to mitigate this. So it's a significant amount of landscaping. Here is the existing architecture on the screen in front of you, being proposed for the four-story product type. Now, we had some comments that changed that, and we, I will go ahead and go to the next slide. Identified in red are some of the proposed changes. And our goal is to work with the city staff between now and, and the city commission, if you decide to move us forward this evening, to allow us to incorporate this in the plan set. So what we did in regards to the architecture, because of those clean, because of those clean, crisp lines that we were talking about, we added these, these awnings in this area to kind of break it up a little bit. Did remove the shutters because the shutters seemed to kind of break that flow of what was being proposed, but we did add these awnings. And then also, on the side of the building, this was the side of the building before, if you recall, it was fairly blank. None of these other features were there. We went ahead and added all these additional features, including awnings, awnings, and these other architectural elements around the window to create a little bit more, both vertical, excuse me, a little bit more eye interest. There are standards. There are a lot of standards on this project because of the nature of the many applications are here. I'm just going to go through, I'm not going to go through them. I'm just going to tell you there are land use standards. Working with Mr. Roach and your staff, he concurs with the request is in compliance with this standard. Your professional staff has reviewed it. There are also standards for the rezoning for both the planned development standards on the church site, but we are in concurrence with that. And there are more coming. And here are the rezoning and planned development standards for the balance of the site on the church site. There are also waiver standards. In front of you are the waiver standards. Again, I can go through these one by one, but we have met with your staff. We have agreed to it. Your staff is in agreement for the waiver standards on the broad, on the, on the apartment site. There are a few more waivers. Again, staff agrees with the waivers on this site. And then there are waivers on the family church site. This is the criteria that's required to be reviewed. And again, your staff is in compliance with those, or in concurrence with those requests. And now we're to the, to the, oops, I'm sorry, to the final slide of my, or very close to the final slide of my presentation. So we do have staff recommendation of approval on the site and on all the applications that are before you. We, however, we don't agree on three items, and I'd like to walk you through those three items, and I'd like the opportunity to come back and rebut as we go through them. The first item is a request to widen the existing sidewalk today, from its existing condition of eight feet, to make it 12 feet. And I'll show you a few pictures on that, and also add a six-foot landscape buffer. The second one is to eliminate a right turn lane into the project going northbound on Village Boulevard to eliminate a right turn lane. And then the third one was a requested mitigation for us to add a roundabout in Village Boulevard at our project entry. Let me walk you through those three items. So this is actually pictures from our subject site. As you can see, this is the existing sidewalk. You'll notice that there are significant amount of public utilities, being FPL boxes and other items. As you look to the south, my arrow is actually headed towards the south, there's actually a significant FPL power line further south, and there is no sidewalk further south. So that existing sidewalk there is, is eight feet wide, and the request is to widen it to 12 feet. As you move towards the north to our neighbors, who I know are in the audience this evening, Spencer Lakes are in the, are in the audience this evening. When you look at what occurs to the north, this is their actual plat, but this is a lot on Spencer Lake. Our property is here on the right-hand side of the screen. This is an aerial view from Papa of the property that's owned by Spencer Lakes. You'll notice that that red line is here behind the cocoa plum or behind the hedge. And here's a view of that cocoa plum and that hedge. My point for showing you this is that sidewalk that being requested for 12 feet on our property will never go north because that is on private land on individual lots. The sidewalk that's existing today is the maximum sidewalk that you're going to have unless you make major modifications to the road network going forward. So to, so from our perspective, it makes no, it doesn't, it's not appropriate to have a 12-foot sidewalk in that area. Also, I'd like to add to that discussion, the 12-foot sidewalk and additional six-foot buffer then starts encroaching into our existing beautiful landscape that's already on that site. So that's the first item, item number one, which I'm sure we'll have a good discussion about, the 12-foot sidewalk. The second one is both, I'm merging them together, is a proposed right turn lane and also a roundabout. And the reason why I'm merging them together is I recognize what staff's position in here is, how can we slow traffic down on Village Boulevard? That's in essence the, the thought process here between both of these proposed conditions. We have proposed a right turn lane coming into the site. We believe that it's the right thing for our neighbors, or for our project to do. And we recognize that, that, excuse me, we recognize that the right turn lane coming in provides additional stacking. It allows our residents, our 280 resident, our 280 units to come into the subject site. Now, as that, as you turn into the site and you have this additional stacking area, we are providing the right-of-way for that area. Typically, I'm not in front of you requesting to, to add or to keep a turn lane. Typically, I'm in front of you saying, we can't do it because there's right-of-way, there's a box, there's this, there's that. We have the right-of-way, or we have the land. Our client wants to dedicate the land for the turn lane. They recognize how important this is for them. We also understand what staff's position is, that having the turn lane would potentially increase the speed. We believe, though, as you come around that turn, that having the right turn lane coming into the site is very important. And then the, the final request is a roundabout in this area at the entrance point, creating a roundabout. And I, when I think about roundabouts, I can think of some good examples and some bad examples. But again, the purpose of that roundabout was to try to slow down traffic, and we, we understand that, and we understand staff's position. But a roundabout, first thing, Village Boulevard is used by a lot of people. Our developer is only one part of it. First, it's an unfair burden to them to allow, to require them to build something. But number two, a roundabout involves community-wide involvement. You can't say we're going to, if I go out there and try to build a roundabout, the neighbors will be very upset. Some people don't like roundabouts. So that involves a significant amount of community-wide development. We also recognize that both the village's POA, who are here, and also I believe the residents of Spencer Lake, will all speak against a roundabout. They don't want it. We don't think it's a fair thing to place on our developer. However, we do understand what the issue is. How do you slow down traffic on Village Boulevard? So we have a couple ideas. We haven't had the opportunity to vet them completely with staff yet. We, our engineer, Mr. Hagan, who's in the audience, he could come up and discuss them if we need to in more detail. But we do have a few ideas to, to show you this evening. So the first one idea was, well, people are coming around that curve, and our apartment complex is on the right-hand side. Can we slow traffic down? Well, we can, and let me just jump to the next picture. We're proposing this advanced signal. This is not the right, the right sign on it, but we're proposing a solar advanced signal to let people know that things are occurring in the, in the upcoming area. We're proposing it identified here where the X is. Mr. Hagan has reviewed it and believes that that's an appropriate spot for it. Mr. Hagan has reviewed it and believes that that's an appropriate spot for it. And then it would, it would have probably this sign or that sign as we work through our traffic engineering component of it. We, we will agree to install that. We recognize that it, that it, that it makes sense, and then also starts achieving the goals of slowing traffic down. Another idea that we've had, that our engineering team will run down, if you agree with us, will run down, is providing rumble sticks, right? So, the ability to have a crosshatching in the pavement as you approach, so when you drive over it, you hear that noise. And, and that's another idea that we have, and we're okay with pursuing that with staff. Again, here, there's a picture of it in the bottom right-hand screen of what that would look like. Ignore the snow in the background as I look at this picture in more detail, but, but those, but that, that type of facility is what we're suggesting. So, those are our three big issues. Other than that, we have staff recommendation of approval, and we look forward to your comments and also the public's comments this evening. And thank you for your time this evening.
Are you any other presenters at this time for the application?
No, sir, but we have our whole team available.
Understood. Any questions of, of the applicant? Let me start on this side. Any questions? Andre?
There we go. So, I guess the one thing that I'm a little surprised about was the elimination of some of the detail on the facade that fronts the Village Boulevard. I would have, I would have thought they would have added more instead of eliminated some. I think that that was maybe a step backwards, but I don't know if you've discussed that with staff or not, but I would maybe reconsider.
Do you like the idea of having the shutters on the building?
Yeah, I think it looks more stark than.
Okay.
That's, that's just one, one, one detail I thought of. I figured you might have a comment as well. And then, I understand that you're, you're asking for quite a bit of variance from the amount of trees, and I know you're adding a lot or keeping a lot and moving a lot of trees around, so you have a significant amount of canopy. I guess if that's, you know, again, okay with staff, then I think that's fine, but I think it's quite a few trees that you're not adding to your landscape plan. I think everything else looks great.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Peter, any questions?
I have a, a couple of questions. Yeah, I'll pick up on what was raised. This is the mask member, by the way.
Right.
The, I'm a little disappointed in terms of the elevations. I thought it was a great opportunity to maybe introduce a second color, break up that very large four-story mass, and I'm surprised the developer hasn't considered it because it certainly would improve the look of the project. My other question was regarding the 12-foot sidewalk.
Oh, yes, sir.
What exactly are we doing with a landing strip in this part of town? And what would the 18 feet be all about?
It would be a total of 12 feet sidewalk.
And what, what happens on 12 feet that cannot happen on four feet?
That, I don't know the answer to that question. No, go ahead, sir.
John, can you mind letting him finish, and we're going to hear from you in just a moment.
No, I just want, I just want to give an explanation that on the traffic issues, we actually have staff that will be presenting the basis for the conditions and why they're proposed and so forth, so I think that question will be answered as part of that.
We understand. We'll give you that opportunity, but right now, we're asking questions of the applicant.
That's it.
Okay. Any questions, Todd?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Hagan.
Hopefully, he's here.
See him hiding in the back. So, I'm sure we'll hear from the staff in just a second on their position, but it seems like we have several different ways we could go with relation to the roundabout and the turn lane, but just from the applicant's position, given the speeds that people drive out there and the trips that are being coming in under the new development, is it, does staff, is it the applicant's position that you need the turn lane? If you don't have the turn lane, you need the roundabout. So, I guess in other words, would it be unsafe without a turn lane and without a roundabout?
Just first, for the record, Chris Hagan with Kimley-Horn Associates, 1920 Wakava Way, West Palm Beach, and I was sworn in. To answer the question, actually, our initial traffic study did not propose either at that intersection. The Village Boulevard is a city-maintained roadway. It is on the county thoroughfare network, so we use the, the county guidelines for determining if a right turn lane was needed or not. The county guideline is, is if you have 75 or more right-turning vehicles, then, then they, on a county-maintained road, and again, we're on the thoroughfare plan, then you're required to put in a right turn lane. We're below that threshold. Actually, the peak hour was 26 projected right turns in, so it was well below that threshold. So, initially, we weren't proposing that. In discussions with, and through community outreach, there was some concern that even though the intersection, as we projected it, is going to be below capacity, the traffic from the project is going to be consuming some of the capacity of the intersection. So, we were looking at some way to increase the, the capacity, and that was, was a way to do that. And, and it does help separate out as people are turning right into the community. It separates them from through traffic, so there was a logical reason for that. But again, it's, it's not necessarily needed by the, the county threshold. It's not needed from a overall level service or capacity standpoint, but it did provide a benefit, so we proposed it. During the review process here through the city, the, the concept of the roundabout was, was brought up. Again, it's not necessarily needed from a capacity standpoint. The concern there was, we did, as that was vetted with other stakeholders, because really, we're not the only stakeholder that's involved. There is a road on the other side, Liberty Oak, that goes into a, a existing residential community, and so they are directly affected by, by that. Plus, there are other neighborhoods, north and south of here on Village Boulevard, that are affected because they're, they're stakeholders as well. It, it seemed clear that other stakeholders were opposed to that. Again, it's not needed from a capacity standpoint, and that's why we, we're looking for alternative methods. I think if I, I'm not sure if I answered the question, but to go back to the beginning, on the initial review of the intersection, to meet level service standards, there wasn't anything needed, but I, I lived on Village Boulevard when I first moved to West Palm Beach, and I know that, that speeding is something that has existed well before this application was proposed, and continues to exist on that road to this day. So, we were looking for a couple of measures. Again, maybe the warning flasher, something that would, would help try to offset, again, something that exists with or without this, this application.
Okay. That's it for me. Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, at this point, we'd like to hear from, anything you want to add first?
So, I just would like to address Mr. Pivko's comment in regards to the architecture. Our client, it was saw, saw it on the screen this evening and said, just said to me a couple of seconds ago, "It's a lot different when you're looking at it and you're in it all day." When he saw it on the screen, he said, "You know what? We agree, we will do a two-color bisect on that because it makes sense." Thank you.
You won't regret it.
All right. Mr. Roach, can we hear from you now, please?
Good evening, for the record. John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. Don't have really anything additional to add. I feel like the applicant was pretty thorough with their presentation, and you saw staff's report, which did have a substantial number of conditions contained within it. I'm happy to go through any of those that you may have a question about, but just one piece of clarification is that Mr. Tuma indicated that the future land use was being changed to multifamily. It's actually being changed to multifamily medium density, which unlike MF, which is 32 units per acre, is actually limited to 20 dwelling units per acre. It's our lowest-density multifamily designation that we have within our comp plan. And then also, as part of that, their zoning, before they go to a residential plan development, their base zoning that they're requesting is MF-14. Again, the project is only a little over nine dwelling units per acre, but the underlying zoning would be allowing just approximately 14 dwelling units per acre. But again, that is our lowest-density multifamily zoning designation that we have. So, you know, if multifamily is the desire on the property, unlike single-family, which the designations provide for today, those are the lowest designations that we have available to, to those applicants. One condition that I do want to emphasize is with regards to that future land use designation, you saw in there that we are proposing to limit the maximum number of trips that can be generated from the, the property. This would be a restriction upon the land use amendment, would be reflected on the land use map and so forth. And the reason for that is that while we understand that the proposed land use could generate a substantial number of trips onto Village Boulevard and the surrounding network, we want, want to limit it to such that it's not a significant impact, and that's the reason that the traffic study was done the way that it was with voluntary restriction, and we're proposing to carry that forward with our recommendation. Just for the record, you saw our recommendations, approvals with conditions for most of the applications. Those were contained within the staff report. Planning Board 1842 didn't have any conditions associated with it, but again, we're recommending approval. So, I am available to answer any questions, but representatives from the city's Engineering Services Department, specifically the Traffic Division, is here, would like to make a presentation with regards to those three conditions dealing with traffic, and then say staff is available for questions.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wen Deng. I am the City Traffic Engineer for the city of West Palm Beach, and I have right with me is Valerio. He is the City Transportation Engineer. Just to, if we haven't met before, just to give you a brief background about us, I'm a practicing transportation engineer, and Valerio is really primarily traffic engineering. So, between the two of us, you know, we sit on National Standards Working Group. We all, myself personally, I'm a delegate to the NCUTCD. This is a committee that makes recommendation on all traffic standards for FHWA. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Valerio to go through this process and what our findings are. In addition to that, when we look at PPRC, when all these cases come in, we not only look at elements that's in the roadway, we look at utilities as well, because it's engineering, we look at all aspects. But ultimately, we try to find the consistency between a planned development and the comprehensive plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Valerio. He's going to go through some of the traffic numbers and the intensity of this development that's being impacted on Village Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you for introduction. Okay. You already seen information about this project location. It is right on Village Boulevard, 3600. Going more on the details of the development, when we do our analysis, we go strictly on the numbers. So, existing, we have a family church village, is about 11,000 square feet development. The future proposed development is going with a multifamily mid-rise with about 280 dwelling units. The main access road to this development will be Village Boulevard. This currently a collector with four-lane divided roadway and a speed limit of 40 miles per hour. Those numbers will be poured on down the presentations to relate the results of our The numbers showcased in these slides are directly taken from the traffic engineering analysis submitted by the developer. The existing conditions, we have about 73 daily trips and about 4:00 AM and 5:00 PM peak hour trips. The proposed development will significantly raise those numbers. And the net increase is highlighted in red. We're going to have about 1,523 new weekday daily trips and about 101 and 123 in the AM and PM peak hours. Moreover, this development is requesting a designation as a planned development, which actually allows to go up to 17, 35 weekly daily trips and about 173 peak hour trips in the AM and PM. So, by just looking at the numbers and compute them, we have about a 20 times increase factor of driveway traffic. We also look at the existing conditions, and we have the numbers of the average, average daily traffic on the road produced by FDOT. Currently, there are about 13,100 average daily trips along Village Boulevard. Such development will add 11% of actual existing traffic on top of it. So, its impact will be fairly significant. As part of the analysis, we also review the crash data. And we reviewed the past three years. There have been about 347 total crashes. We have a breakdown by the crash type, but in terms of severity, we have about two fatalities, including one pedestrian, and 66 injuries. They're not, they're fairly, I would say, significant numbers as well. We definitely want to achieve our vision zero goal of no death and no injuries. Here is the location of the crash analysis. On the right side, you will see those blue balloons. The bigger they are, the highest, the number of crashes. But what we, I would like to highlight is the fact that a lot of those crashes happen in intersections, and a lot of them are due to the design of the intersection itself. We picked two intersections that are going to be fairly similar in terms of traffic once the new development will be implemented, specifically the Shenandoah and the Cumberland Road. In both locations, you can see those screenshots. They are taken from street view, and you will see the issue that we are having nowadays. A lot of people, there are not, there are multiple conflict points, and there is not enough queue area or stacking. As a matter of fact, you will see, for example, two cars almost pretty much colliding to each other, or the car in the middle of the road, unless it's going to find a gap, I'm referring to the Shenandoah picture. This car is coming in the direction, it's looking southbound. Unless the car finds a gap and clears the road, there's going to be a near miss or an actual crash. On the Cumberland picture, you can see two cars trying to make the turn but stacking side by side. So, as you can see, there are several operational issues along this corridor throughout the intersections along it. The other aspect that we analyzed is speed. This was taken.
That was, that was me.
So, talking about speed, we had this, the West Palm Beach Police Department on March 6/20.
Hit it on the record. Thank you, Peter.
On March 6, 2020, you know, they, when they're out on the road, they wanted to highlight the current issue that we are having on the corridor. As stated earlier, it's a 40 miles per hour corridor. However, during that day, we managed to, I guess, set up a record, 86 miles per hour recorded. And this, you know, is just a day, but imagine on a daily basis, how many, you know, instances, you know, with speed limits being not pretty much followed. The other item is regarding the master plan. The fact that this corridor is part of the bicycle master plan, and we have a vision of what it is today and what we would like to be in the future. Prior to the, my presentation, there was the question regarding, why do we need such a, why the sidewalk, why we need so much designation for a multipath? The idea is the fact that maybe down the road, we won't have the opportunity to do a buffered bike lane, but having the, a fairly wide sidewalk, we can consider an alternative with a shared-use multipath along the corridor itself. I would say our goal is to be future-proof. Now, besides the engineering analysis, as Wen told you, we also review the actual code. It's not just the numbers, but it's also the regulation, the words attached to this development. Chapter 94, Article 7, Section 94-207, is specifically designated to regulate planned development, specifically in Part B, General Provisions and Requirements. This covers compliance with other sections. In our case, we're going to be referring to the subsection 94-35C, Site Design Qualitative Development Standards, and then Section 94-33, Comprehensive Plan Consistency. Another item they will be highlighting is Part B 3, which is dedication of public facilities, which pretty much implies dedication reservation of improvement of property for public right-of-way streets, school, parks, mass transit facilities, or other public facilities that may be required is a condition or requirement of the planned development ordinance. is a condition or requirement of the plan development ordinance or designation. Again, those are code that should be used not only to regulate, but also pretty much to follow up or have an exchange of giving a waiver, but also in the same time allowing, you know, the better goods, I would say, of the public. Going more in the details, Section ninety-four dash thirty-five C specifically states, access drives need to be arranged in order to minimize any negative impacts. Traffic improvements should be provided where there will be significant improve in safety for vehicles and pedestrians. I'm highlighting, I would say, the main point. Part nine, the arrangement of public or common ways for vehicle and pedestrian circulation shall be coordinated with the pattern of existing or planned street and pedestrian or bicycle pathway in the area. Section ninety-four thirty-three, all development within the city, including all development orders, building, electrical plumbing, mechanical and paving permits, and public improvements shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So what is in the comprehensive plan? The most important item we're going to be referring to will be the transportation element. Vision principle number two promotes the increased use of bicycle and pedestrian facility and the city shall seek to improve the bicycling and pedestrian environment. And by seeking to provide as well wider sidewalks. Vision principle number six, develop a transportation network that emphasizes safety and aesthetics. Besides visions, we also have goals. Goal two point one, the city of West Palm Beach shall regularly evaluate the operational condition of its road while making sure that the needs of the users of different modes of transportation are considered. So just not cars or any other modes of transportation. Now the objective, two point one point one, the city shall monitor and evaluate the operational condition of its roads in order to provide a transportation system which moves people, goods, and services in a safe, efficient, convenient, and economic manner with minimal impact to the environment. Our objective is two point three point six. Pedestrian safety and comfort shall be achieved by shortening pedestrian crossing distances and increasing sidewalk width and lowering motor vehicle speeds to reduce the potential for injury to pedestrians. Besides visions and goals, we also have actual policies. Policy two point three point six A, the city shall implement traffic calming measures to physically alter driver behavior to decrease speeds in unsafe situations, reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use, and improve conditions for non-motorized users. Now the policy is two point three point three D, the city shall pursue additional funding from public and private sources. For streetscape and landscape projects, they improve the aesthetics of the streets and increase the safety of all its users. Our policy is two point five point, two point four point five A, the cities shall continue to support and improve infrastructure for comfort and safety for bicyclists, pedestrians, and transit user as part of its planning and construction activities. Based on all the data, based on the code requirements, we pretty much came out with those recommendations. It's based on facts and statistics and actual code requirements. Our first recommendation would be a twelve-foot shared use path with a six-foot landscape buffer by the side frontage. As we showed, we required this in order to provide safety to the pedestrians, but also to be future-proof in case, you know, buffered biking can be implemented by shared multipath can be done. The other main recommendation that we are providing is the two-lane roundabout at the side southern driveway. The reason we are proposing this roundabout is for the significant number of vehicle trips added to this actual intersection. Moreover, having the roundabout will also remove the need for a deceleration lane. It will be actually cost-saving. Going back on that deceleration lane, that deceleration lane will not slow down cars. It definitely keep the same speed, but also possibly increase such speeds. Moreover, as we show in the code, we are trying to minimize the distances for pedestrian crossing the road. Adding a deceleration lane will increase such distance. Moreover, once you implement the deceleration lane, it will be difficult and fairly unsafe to have actually a buffer lane because you're going to have cars crossing in between. In our case also, this is also to reduce the congestion and the stacking issue with the left turn movements at all these intersections. It's not just here, as you can see in the pictures that we provided. There are several locations where pretty much casual queuing, stacking, and there are very unsafe conditions. Last but not the least, why we are pushing a roundabout and why it does matter in this area? The reason is, we already have a roundabout that's been recently implemented nearby. This was at the Cumberland Drive in Saratoga Road. This was implemented about a year ago. We did a one-year before and after analysis and we compared the results. The eighty-fifth percentile speed was reduced from thirty-seven miles per hour to twenty miles per hour. One year before the implementation of the roundabout, we had several incidents of which two with injuries and one with property damage. One year after, no injuries at all and just two property damage crashes. In general, data from the FHWA highlight the fact that implementing a roundabout reduced fatal, serious injury and minor injury by a factor of thirty-five to seventy-eight percent. And with this, I will conclude my presentation. If you have any question or if there's anything more that-
Anything you'd like to add before we-
Yeah, absolutely. I want to point out that this is really an exciting roundabout for us. It's the first protected bicycle roundabout that we have in Palm Beach County. And because of this roundabout, we are now helping to rewrite the roundabout chapter of the next updates to national standards. So if there's anything, I think our, this roundabout and the proven data from this roundabout shows significant increase, or decrease in traffic crashes. Not only that, but, you know, eighty-fifth percentile. And that's the biggest issue that we, as in the engineering department and especially traffic engineering is, we typically get about once a week, we get about three or four calls about speeding on Village Boulevard. So we are asked to look at Village Boulevard as a whole. And this is part of our entire planning process as we look at all of Village and see how we can mitigate and, you know, and to mitigate some of the impact. And I believe that our recommendation is not inconsistent with the PD, the plan development process. And it's very consistent with our comprehensive plan and the recommendations that came out of it. There are a couple of things that I want to point out, as it was mentioned earlier, that utilities impact. Adding that turn lane will have significant utilities impact because you're not talking about moving the transformer, but you're talking about water sewer and also drainage impact by adding a turn lane. So we're not adding additional impervious areas as we're introducing a roundabout because it's naturally its existing condition. The other thing that I heard earlier is the county thoroughfare. The villages on the county thoroughfare map, most of the high crashes that we have in the city, and I can name you the three highest crash corridor, is one of them is actually on a county road itself. So we're talking about a city streets that is a collector road that serves residents who's living in this community. And for that, you know, I'm here to answer any questions. We have other data, more detailed data that we perform our analysis, if you'd like to see that. But ultimately, we're here to present all the findings that we have and we're here to present our professional recommendations of what can be improved as part of this PD.
Okay. Any questions? Let me start, Mark, with you. Okay, okay, that's fine. Andre, any questions of the individuals up?
One comment I would, so this, this, this intersection that you're showing here, is this close by?
Yes. It's at Cumberland, I believe it's about half a mile away. It's in the villages. It was recently built. We started this project and was supported by the neighborhood, by the way. And it went through face of the city approval by the city commission for a roundabout.
So having another roundabout so close by is, it seems kind of, in my opinion, it seems a little overkill.
It's not on the same road, it's on a different intersection.
Okay, that's what I figured, well, obviously, because it's not on Village Boulevard. I would say, you know, in my opinion, and I'm a traffic engineer, I'm a landscape architect, but I would say that to me, it seems to make more sense in a, where two, two major streets, like you had Shenandoah, you showed Shenandoah and Village Boulevard and I've been, I frequent that intersection quite a bit. I'd say it makes more sense there than it does a small entrance into a small cluster of homes or apartments or condos or whatever you want to call this project. I, I think it's a little unnecessary there. I could see it maybe somewhere else on Village Boulevard because I have definitely frequented that road often. I do think that, I wouldn't say we need to widen, you would need to, the applicant would have to widen their sidewalk, but having some kind of a small divider strip with some landscaping or even just grass would probably make people feel a little safer walking along that road. But I don't think that a twelve-foot walkway and a six-foot landscape buffer is, is necessary. I think that's a little too much. And I'm sure they could work around that transformer maybe by bypassing or wrapping the sidewalk around the, the outside of it and having that landscaped or grassed or whatever. But I, I definitely don't think that a, a roundabout is, that, I don't think that's the right spot for a roundabout.
Is there a question? I mean-
No, it's no question, it's just a comment, observation.
We'll have the discussion. Any questions of these people?
So let's assume this widened sidewalk occurs in front of this development. What's going to happen to the north when there's only really a four-foot sidewalk and no other physical way of introducing a bicycle lane? So you're going to have a bicycle lane that's a thousand feet long and it comes to a dead end?
So I'm going to say about two years ago, a very similar scenario. We worked on the Kravis project. There was a, a protected bike lane introduced. It was approved and it was built. And because of that, the other development, which is Rosemary Square, related group came in with a similar proposal. Our goal is always to connect the network as much as we can. And as part of Village Boulevard, even though this is like what we call an urban acupuncture, it's just a pinch point for us. But our goal is to completely redo Village Boulevard and to provide the, the, the safety that we have. So that level connectivity will come as part of future planning, but we have to start from somewhere.
Okay, but you have a physical impediment. You're going to have this island of twelve feet and it's going to go, come from nowhere and go nowhere. And that, the north property will never change. So that you're always going to have to deal with a dead end.
Sure. If, but if we don't dedicate space now, five years from now, we're not going to be able to dedicate the space that we need. So it, again, you know, we are working within the parameters of what is directed for us. And for us is to ensure that we are future-proofing ourselves as we're planning for multimodal improvements.
No, I'm all in favor of bike lanes and so on. Okay, my other question is dealing with the roundabout. The entrance that's coming into the development, is this an entrance or an entrance and an exit?
The proposed is-
Yeah, it's a full drive.
It's a full, it's a full drive. And like what earlier, what another board member said, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, but is that the, the driveways itself, but if you look at the existing driveway, you only have four to AM and five PM, right? As you're introducing this development, the intensity itself is twenty times more of the factor. So that, the left turn movement is what we're concerned of. Not only the proposed development, but across the street at that existing development. Making that left turn is challenging. By introducing a roundabout, you're essentially encourage safety behavior and you're reducing the, the conflict point of that intersection itself. You're introducing a major intersection as the development is being proposed.
You know, I've, I've driven in Europe a lot and there's a lot of roundabouts in Europe. And, and when you have a roundabout, it, there's a preference to a certain direction of traffic. Let's call it north-south. East-west always has to struggle to break into the traffic flow, always. And in this situation, the exit from this new development is going to have to struggle with the northbound traffic is going to go around the turnaround and it's going to struggle trying to blend into the southbound traffic. So I'm not convinced a, a, a roundabout works in this situation. You mentioned about the de-accelerating lane. To me, that's always a very good idea. And I'm trying to understand from your perspective why you don't agree with that.
The decel lane, essentially, what it does is it takes vehicle from a travel lane. And so as you're making a right turn to the property, essentially that encourage higher speed on the, the travel lane that's going north-south. So when you introduce a little bit of congestion, you introduce slower speed. So technically, what we're trying to do is slow, like, look, the improvement, the development, the developer is proposing a sign and some rumble strip is not going to be able to slow down the traffic at this intersection. So by adding a right turn lane, you're introducing higher speed. Some roads like that, just look at, for example, Forty-Fifth Street, right? Every time you have a development, there's a right turn lane. If you look at that eighty-fifth percentile speed, it's as high as Village Boulevard. And that's not a road that we're trying to build for this community. So, and the other argument with us is that you're going to build a decel lane, you're going to impact utilities, you're going to have to basically pay for a brand-new pavement section at that location. The cost is almost as an equivalent as introducing a roundabout, so there's-
Really? Okay. Let me, let me ask you my final question. Did the city engineering department consider a four-way stop?
Four-way stop is not an appropriate use for traffic calming. And, and I'll tell you what, like, we, we looked at all aspect. We looked at chicane, we looked at all traffic calming, we even looked at speed bumps. And it's not an appropriate use for speed bumps at this location. The next request that I foresee that we're going to get is a traffic light. And if we look at adding a traffic light at this location, it will never warrant a traffic light. So a roundabout has more capacity than a traffic signal and that's why we're proposing a roundabout that would not only accommodate the volume of traffic that's coming in and out of this development, but it would reduce speed on Village Boulevard and enhance the safety that we have in this area.
No, I can understand the speed. And I hate rumble strips because the negative side effect are the residents that are next to them. And all twenty-four hours a day, you're going to hear, all day long. And that's a horrible solution. And in terms of signage, you know, you put a little sign that says Radar FM. You watch the people really slow down.
I'm not sure if legally we can do that, but yeah, you know.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
Got any questions?
Yeah. Has the staff or the applicant actually done kind of a concept at that intersection for the roundabout? And how does it fit in relation to the buildings that they're proposing up against the right of way?
Yeah, we did, we did check the existing right of way. We also see the parcel arrangement. And we also check the minimum requirement for a two-lane roundabout. We would need about a seventy-five feet radius. I don't have the graphic here in the presentation, you don't want to overwhelm you with too much information, but we have pretty much initial schematics where we can, we can fit a roundabout within the right of way without any appropriation and such. A roundabout will be easily able to fit within the right of way. A roundabout will be easily able to fit within the right-of-way or the actual intersection.
So their site plan that they're proposing would still work if you did a right-of-way in that location? As far as the building locations, I guess, I'm mainly-
Yeah, it would not affect, no, not at all. It would definitely, you know, with their existing, uh, build-out setback, the roundabout can fit without any problem. It won't require any further change to their site plan.
And then, sensing some potential skepticism on the board about the roundabout, so if, if we were to move forward with the recommendation not to do the roundabout, did I hear correctly that staff would, would not want the deceleration in the right-turn lane either?
So, a deceleration lane is for safety reasons. You want a deceleration lane in order to avoid, you know, someone breaking in and rear-handed. You do have deceleration lane with a high-speed location. You do it in a arterial, you know, Ketchumbe Boulevard, you do it on a highway, you have deceleration acceleration lane. This is a urban street. We are aiming to reduce speed. Maybe it's not gonna increase, but it's definitely not gonna decrease either, and there are more chances gonna actually, you know, make people going faster, instead of having sort of a forced car slowing down, making the right turn, and will kind of force any other cars in the street to slow down themselves. Again, this is not a high-speed road. We want to control and reduce the speed, the deceleration lane won't help. On the contrary, the roundabout will do that. It will slow down the cars, it will re- remove all the conflict points that we are currently exist- existing. And then we have two examples. We have all this intersection right there, where you can see it. Car-stacking, near-miss, I guess every day we are in luck, nobody dies, probably gonna have, you know, some, some side swipe and such. And then, on the other hand, we do have a roundabout in the same area. So the argument that people are not used to it doesn't exist. You know, people are really used to a roundabout. They have one less than half a mile away. Moreover, it's not, the number of roundabouts, to be honest, there should be a roundabout in each one of those intersections right there. So, isn't, you might wanna start from one of them, but you know, why not start in from one where we have to redesign the actual intersection? And then if it becomes effective, then it will be applied to every single one of the other intersection themselves. So I would say that, as a proof of concept, we already proved the value in a roundabout nearby the same facility, and it's only on a side street. If you're gonna implement this on a main street, as in Village Boulevard, and we see the potential effect, we can actually reapply it to every single other intersection where we have an issue.
That's it for me.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. Um, first, let me welcome you both to the city. We look forward to working with you. Appreciate your presentation. Um, I understand, I'm not necessarily, I'm convinced, but I fully understand your arguments in favor of the roundabout and in favor of the sidewalk. Where you lose me is on the deceleration lane, and let me explain why. First of all, if we didn't have the deceleration lane, the traffic, such as it is, is unchanged, correct? Now, when we add the deceleration lane, it seems to me that the issue is one of safety. Safety for the cars that are slowing down or maybe coming into complete stop. And to use that, that potential danger as a traffic calming thing seems to be unwise, particularly when you so persuasively show how dangerous this area is, how fast people are speeding, to have slowing down or stop cars serving as that traffic calming thing seems to be unsafe. And I understand also the argument that perhaps it's, you know, an unwise use of the developer's money, but if they're prepared to pay for it, that's their decision. It seems to me, not ours. If the city were paying for it, I could understand, but if they wish to do so for a safety reason, I understand. It seems to me that your central argument is, traffic needs to be calmed there, and the question, how best to do it, but I don't think the safety of the motorists coming and leaving there should be part of it, from my perspective. Because the only reason it's gonna serve as a traffic calming is because cars are gonna come up to them presumably at a higher rate of speed and have it to slow down suddenly, hopefully without an accident. And I just, it seems to me that's an unwise policy, if that's the goal for traffic calming alone, that's all. I'd welcome your comments on that, that's my concern on that. I understand the other two arguments, I do not understand the deceler- Now, maybe as a practical matter, if the roundabout is allowed, the developer may make the decision, the deceleration lane no longer makes sense, but that seems to me its decision, not ours.
So, again, the deceleration lane should be used in a high-speed environment, where you realize there's, you know, several-
But you've already proven this is a high-speed environment.
Absolutely. You know, very high speed, it's in between.
Eighty-something seem very fast to me.
We have to check the statistics probably like once in a blue moon, catch one of those guys.
Yeah.
I would say this-
You have good breaks.
Throughout the corridor, this would be one of the very few deceleration lane implemented. So, it's not that has been implemented in any, all the other location, we see the benefits, we're gonna reapply it again. The second item is, I would say, the fact that I think you misunderstood what we said, regarding the fact that we intentionally don't want the right-turn lane and sort of intentionally have people, you know, hitting their brakes to hit, absolutely not. I would say, in that specific location, it's on a turn. And then, yeah, maybe you have some also issue with stopping side distance and such. I would say that the deceleration lane, I mean, might barely help, but we have the opportunity to implement a roundabout, which is not gonna be, no, which is not gonna be paid by tax, pay your money.
I appreciate. I don't want the two arguments being conflated, though, the deceleration lane and the roundabout. It seems to me that the argument for a roundabout is a safety one, and if the developer's prepared to pay for it, then it seems to me that, that, and it doesn't, it doesn't negate the, your argument for a roundabout, that's a separate argument. I, I understand that argument. I don't think they should be conflated. The point here is, how does a round, how does a deceleration lane, which presumably is there for safety concerns? How does that undercut the goals of the city here? Because safety should be paramount.
Yeah, so, as I said, we are designing this road for all road user, not just for cars, but for bicyclists and pedestrians. It was one part of the code where pretty much we want to widen our sidewalk and reduce the distance the pedestrian has to cross. The moment you put a deceleration lane, you're gonna have another extra 10 to 12 feet.
It's, it's weighing the balancing.
That's one item.
Just something short the distance versus the, the safety.
Anything adds up, but, you know, if you want to be specific, that would be the part of it.
I'm sorry, I, I, if I wanna, if I can add something. We have to look at what we can propose to provide the most safety, right? And the most safety that we feel as professionals is a roundabout at this location. And I know everybody has an opinion whether if we should support a roundabout or not, but it's our job to not, here to fight for something. We are here to present all the facts that we found as staff, so for you to make a decision as a board on what is the best thing to do.
What I need to interject is, when I asked about the deceleration lane, we conflated then to the why we need a roundabout. I understand the arguments for the roundabout, it doesn't negate the argument for a deceleration lane, or if it does, I haven't heard it. That's my question.
The, both aspect will provide some level of safety benefit. Whether a decel lane provide, I don't know, five, and the roundabout 10, I don't know what that number is. But what we're proposing is that if the developer is proposing to pay with their own money for a decel lane-
Which is my understanding.
-that they would offset that number and give us an additional benefit of a safer, safer intersection.
But that's its decision, right? In other words, if, if you're correct that the roundabout makes sense and the city chooses to impose it, that's fine, but to tell the developer who feels they need a deceleration, you can't have it because we want you to pay for this other thing, which if we're gonna require, they're gonna pay for it anyway, but to tell them they cannot additionally pay for deceleration lane that they think's needed for the safety of their residents, it seems to me to say, well, because we think it conflicts with the roundabout need, I'm missing that argument.
Right, but what happens is, when the developer comes in and asks for a series of waivers, the city also asks for a series of improvements to the corridor, and it's a balance.
Again, I, I feel like two parallel lines that are never gonna meet on this. You're giving me all the reasons for the roundabout, and I'm trying to understand the reasons against the deceleration lane, and it seems like you feel the two are contingent on each other. I don't necessarily see it that way, but perhaps, perhaps not. I appreciate any other questions of the-
I have a question. One of my major pet peeves, primarily in Florida, are people that don't use their turn signals. Would you say that if there was a de-accelerating lane and a sign 500 feet or whatever is appropriate ahead of that, saying, please use your turn signals, would that improve or reduce the rear-end collisions?
I don't know if this study out there has been made.
You're the traffic experts?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, um, it's kinda hard to say, because, um, even if we post a sign that says 40 miles per hour on Village Boulevard, does people respect the 40 miles per hour?
Some do.
You know, so I, it's-
Or, I'll give you a, a good example. When I first moved here, I was crossing the bridge to go to Palm Beach, and say, holy cow, there's a police car right there. It was the first day, but then say, holy cow, that car has been there forever. And I figure out, oh, wow, that's an empty car, they just put it there for the, you know, the tourists. So, I would say if you're a local, yeah, you can put a, you know, an empty police car the first week, they're gonna slow down, but then, you know, everybody knows the trick, so it won't be impactful. So the point is this, you can put a sign, you can put anything you want, but the, the way you're gonna slow down traffic is by the sign. A roundabout will slow down traffic, because you're not gonna go top speed around it. So, that's the conclusion.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right, any other questions of staff before we hear, um, from the public? If not, thank you so much. We do have a number of cards, and, um, I will call two for each lectern, if you could come forward when your name is called. Angel Turb- Turbenville, Ken, Kevin Mahoney at this lectern, if we could have Larry Alexander and Ron Warnaki at this lectern. Please come forward if you still wish to speak. Whoever gets to the lectern first can begin. Okay. Come, come to that one, and we'll start with him, and you can be ready for the next one. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Pastor Kevin Mahoney from Family Church. I have been part of Family Church now for 20 years, have been part of a number of developments in our community. Want to say thank you to staff for their help in working with us and the developer in working through some of the waivers that we needed to get, to get this project proposed here tonight. We are in full support of this, and we want this to move forward, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Warnaki, president of the villages of Palm Beach Lakes. I submitted a letter to all of you, and I'm going to make it brief because of time, and we all do want to get out of here. Um, president of the villages, 14 years, 37 associations, uh, 6,000 units and over 12,000 residents. We've had meetings, Alliance has had meetings with us, we've passed the meetings on. We are highly in favor of this project, and they do a quality work. I'm familiar with their product in, in New Brunswick, New Jersey, which was very successful, and, uh, that's, that's all I'm gonna say about that. Now, in regard to staff recommendations, uh, a roundabout, uh, the statistics are extremely wrong. The roundabout that they referred to, which they feel is highly successful, which we really did not improve, but the Palm Beach Post said we did, uh, is not that successful in even that two-lane, uh, two, the one-lane roads leading to it at 30 miles an hour. People in Florida don't know how to drive roundabouts. I'm from New Jersey and Massachusetts, we have them all over the place. We called them circles a half a century ago. So, uh, we, we object to the roundabout, and to this day, we are still having problems with traffic, because people still think it is a stop sign there and go right through it. Okay, be that as it may, let's get back to the, uh, sidewalk required. I know it's a major expense to the developer, but the result of the sidewalk required would be a 20-foot-wide sidewalk, which would encompass 3% of all of Village Boulevard, most of which has a four-foot-wide sidewalk. In addition, they want to make it more walkability. To continue that to the north, they will be taking 20% of the backyards of the people in Spencer Lakes, which is absurd. Oh, and they'll be making it walkability to, to a city that has the highest crime rate in all of Florida and seventh highest in the nation. So that's my analysis of the, uh, what they want to do, and I hope we do accept the Alliance project with the exceptions that they want. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Angel Turbiville, and I am the campus director at Family Church Village. So I just wanna thank you, um, and we are just excited about the possibility of this, and we are in favor of the development, and we are hoping that we can move forward with that.
Thank you. Carol Bruno, Sandy Methanich. Forgive me. And then Larry Alexander and Ike Robinson at this lectern. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Carol Bruno, I'm a resident almost directly across from this project. Uh, first off, thank you for all your time and for these presentations, they're really quite interesting. 40% of my questions were answered, and, uh, so I don't have quite as many, but I still would like to know when the, um, this roundabout is discussed. As Ron had said, we have one that was put in at Cumberland, I believe, which is just awful. And the roundabout, to me, does not make much sense, but I have not heard anybody say a traffic light. I mean, people, it's common sense, put a traffic light in, your pedestrians crossing the street, you put the thing where it has the seconds that give them the crossing, and I'm 71 years old and can make it quite easily across both traffics, because you have the strip in the middle where you can stop, look, and continue. The other thing is this bike thing that is gonna start at a certain place and stop. When you look at Village Boulevard, we have sidewalks on the opposite side of this project that run the entire length of 45th Street, all the way, almost, definitely to community and some beyond. Those, and we have used, I've lived there 16 years now, and the pedestrians and the bikers use those, that sidewalk very compatibly, and even if we, we don't, first off, you don't have that many people out all at the same time, there's not 100 bikes at one time, and I don't see the need to extend another gigantic sidewalk for something when just crossed the street. There's a sidewalk that goes all the way up that gives us perfect accessibility. Uh, my other comment was in your, um, description of the four-story building. They are rather high, but I'm sure it's, they're going to be lovely, uh, but I questioned the fact that you're going to put awnings or consider awnings. These, this is a hurricane state, and even coming down from the north, hurricanes are devastating in most cases to awnings. I don't know why you would consider that, but if you think that's good, fine, but then who is going to take care of it? The Alliance will take care of them as they get ripped off and do not look good. So that was my other question. Let's see, traffic, the lane, the sidewalk? The last question I have is, after this project is completed, is it Alliance that is in charge of maintaining the maintenance of the whole area, inside the buildings, outside the buildings, and the landscaping? Is that all their project that, that will just continue?
Well, let the applicant answer that one, it's his turn to respond. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, please come forward. I still have three other-
Good afternoon, Ike Robinson. On behalf of Chris Finkley and the other two members of the board of Spencer Lakes, we do approve of the project. However, we have major concern with the traffic that this is gonna create. Right quick, the Neighborhood Association meeting that the developer put on the screen is not actual and/or factual, and we did ex parte communications, and it's wrong. If they wanna know, I'll let them know what it is. The two areas that are really affected are Sandowood North and Spencer Lakes. The roundabout, we are definitely opposed to the roundabout, because what you're doing, you're creating a killing zone at Liberty Oaks Avenue, Charter Avenue, and the new entrance and exit into this project. You're gonna create a killing zone. Now, I'll turn to staff and say, if you want to do a roundabout, about eight years ago, I recommended that you put one at Brandywine and Villiers, and you probably wouldn't have had those two fatalities. So the Neighborhood Association is opposed to that. If you look at the 12, the sidewalk expansion, those are our hedges, private- expansion, those are our hedges, private hedges. We maintain, we bought them and put them in. Are you gonna take them out and replace them with anything? If you do, well, maybe we'll consider it. Traffic is a concern. I don't know how I'm gonna go home and tell my wife. It is because my wife called the chief of police and spoke with the assistant chief, and that took place. Village is a speedway from Brandywine to Keats Shallow and Keats Grove Lane. You can slow it down, you don't need a traffic light. We did meet with the developers, and we looked at some things. We did an on-site visitation. They came up with some ways to slow things down. We would be amenable to that. We don't need a traffic light. But if you put a roundabout, you're gonna do a killing zone. If you don't do something with the traffic, you're gonna do a killing zone. And a bad part about, about two hundred yards north is where I live. I'm eighty-two. I don't want to be one of the fatalities that you're gonna allow one of these cars to go through and take me out. I want to get about ninety-two, ninety-five, something like that. So we are really in favor of the project, but unless you do something with this traffic, and the developers did, what we recommended was on the screen there. We are not asking for a traffic light, but you gotta have some kind of signalization to slow traffic down, and that would do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I still have three cards here. Chris Finkley, Larry Alexander, and William Little. And ma'am, it looks like you're standing up. You're welcome to speak if you plan to. Did I call your card earlier? Okay, please, come forward. And you could go sort of this lectern over here if you wish. And proceed, ma'am.
Sandy Mettivich, West Palm Beach. I've been a resident of Spencer Lakes for thirty-four years, and nobody has to tell me about the traffic on Village Boulevard, the accidents my neighbors have been in trying to exit. There's two roads that are used to enter and exit Spencer Lakes. The first one is Keats Grove, and there's a light there. But the speeding was so bad, when Spencer Lake residents had the green light, they'd go. People coming up and down Village, ridiculous speeds, there was an accident guaranteed. About two years ago, the police put a couple of cars out there for the week. And we're looking at, I was personally involved with this, a couple of hundred speeders in a week. It was a goldmine. The city, the help of the county, put up a flashing warning light. And when you, before you hit Keats, you're coming off a curve, bad curve. I think it's a bad curve. And before you know it, you're on top of the light. So they put a warning signal, and everybody seems to love it. And it does help. It helps with the accidents there. My concern with traffic is on Temple Street, which empties out on Village. When you come out on Temple, you go maybe seventy-five, a hundred feet to the right, and you're on Forty-Fifth Street. What I would like to see, they have warning signs on both sides of the street. Don't block the intersection. Well, again, that's coming off another curve, and the drivers are on top of it before they see it. And we've got residents in Spencer Lakes, all they want to do is get out and go to work. That's what they get their kids to school, or they can't do it. What I would like to see, and I understand it's popular, and I understand it works, is I'd like to see a sign with, do not block the box. I'd really like to see that. I think it'll help. The flashing warning signs helped, and I think this block the box would. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Thank you. My name is William Little. I'm a thirty-year resident of Spencer Lakes, and I've been up and down Village Boulevard about five thousand times. So I have a suggestion for the planning board in the future and for the traffic engineers. As I listened to the comments, it dawned on me that it would have been quite helpful to the planning board, especially because you got, most of you folks don't go up and down the street, may not even have been up and down the street in the last year, for all I know. It would have been helpful to use modern technology and something like dash cam video to give you a better perspective and a realistic picture of what's going on. Because up in that area, once you get, once you get north of the canal, one of the things that happens that most people don't even realize, even when they're driving on the road, is the degree of those two turns between the canal and Forty-Fifth Street. And as you look at the map that you all sent out, you can see that once you get to the western side of the, that little leg that comes down from the lake, as you can see, it's virtually, it's almost at the same parallel angle as I-95, meaning that Village Boulevard crosses that, at that point, it crosses heading west, almost west. And then, as you go further north, it curves back again to intersect with Forty-Fifth Street in an almost directly north position. So in that, in that mile and a half period of distance, you have approximately two hard, hard turns, and the same thing happens at night. So I think it would be very helpful to you all in understanding the traffic and the conditions if you had the ability to look at something like a dash cam video. And that's, you know, that's all the suggestion I have. Thank you.
I mean, thank you, sir. I have two other cards, Chris Finkley and Larry Alexander. All right. And you are, sir, I didn't hear. Okay. And then, Mr. Finkley, are you still here? If not? Okay. Let's see, he says, okay, here it is. I support the development. Traffic is a major concern. Does anyone who has not spoken who wishes to speak? Ma'am, why don't you come forward? We'll need you to complete a card afterwards, but you could come forward now. Anyone else? Then you'll be our last speaker. Please state your name for our record.
Hi, I'm Fay Forna. I live in Spencer Lakes, and I've lived there over thirty-plus years. I did go to the presentation that they presented to Spencer Lakes, and there was like sixty-three people there. I don't know where the other figures came from. But we were primarily against the project because of the traffic. What we were told at that time is that they were gonna have an entry lane and an exit lane. And the exit lane could only come out and make a right-hand turn. So you were coming out, you were making that right-hand turn, you were gonna go to a traffic light at Temple. Now, in the morning time, I barely, I have to almost get into the turn lane to get out of my neighborhood because there are bus stops there, and you have a traffic jam there already. So if you add the amount of traffic that was proposed tonight, you're just gonna have a backlog of cars there because they have to come out of that development and make a right-hand turn. Now, it was said tonight that that entry lane is an entry and exit lane. That was not what was told to us. So my main concern is the amount of traffic that's going to be there in the morning. I'm already having a hard time with that, getting out onto Village Boulevard, because I come out of my neighborhood, I come into Village, and I make a left-hand turn. And that's already dangerous for me. So the more cars you add, the more backup you're gonna have, and the more dangerous it's gonna be. So I just want the board to please consider.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. If we could trouble you to complete a card for our record. Thank you so much. All right. At this point, we'll let the applicant, if they wish, to come forward and respond to any things they've heard here, and then we'll bring them back to the board for discussion.
Good evening. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Schutzenbowen. On behalf of the applicant I was sworn in, Mr. Chairman, we're probably gonna tag team answer some of this between Ken Tuma, myself, and Chris Hagan. So why don't we let Ken tackle a couple of the issues first?
Sure. So I'd just like to clarify a few items that were said, in particular, a couple items in regards to the very good question about what will those, what will those awnings be? They will be aluminum and will be hurricane-rated, so that will not be an issue. So you'll be protected on that matter. In regards to the right turn lane, the, what would need to be relocated to construct that right turn lane? Are there significant utilities in that right turn lane? The answer is, I just confirmed with our civil engineer, we will need to relocate one inlet to allow for drainage. There are no major utility changes occurring for that right turn lane. And I will happily address any other items as they come up, and I'll turn over, Mr. Oyer, Mr. Hagan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and planning board members. And when it gets hard, I'll ask Chris Hagan to come up and give the real answers. But let's try to break this into the three issues that we're opposed to, because I think what we heard here is overwhelmingly there's support for this in the neighborhood, and we're grateful for that, that the project is good project. And we're, I think, gonna distill it down to one issue that concerns everyone, and that's the traffic on Village. But let's try to get the easier ones out of the way first. The right-hand decel lane, I've been doing this almost twenty-two years, and boards like yours and city commissions and county commissions extract that from my clients. You require that of us. This is the only time in my career that we're offering one, and the city doesn't want it. I cannot for the life of me understand why we would want to endanger the lives of our residents making a right-hand turn on northbound Village. And all the testimony here from staff and neighbors that live there is the speed is too high on Village Boulevard. There doesn't seem to be any dispute about that. Why would you use the rear end of our tenants' cars as your traffic calming method? That just does not make any sense. So I hope you don't seriously consider that staff comment that defies logic. The sidewalk, I think this ought to be an easy one, too. We have an eight-foot sidewalk the entire length of our property. It goes nowhere to the south. There is no sidewalk to the south. To the north, it can only be four feet wide unless the city would like to begin exercising their condemnation authority and taking the backyards of these people. That's not gonna happen. So I'm not sure I understand what the need for an urban width sidewalk, which makes plenty of sense on Clemata Street, where you have sidewalk dining and lots of people passing each other, but in one of the most suburban parts of the city, to put an urban width sidewalk that leads nowhere on both ends. And then you compound the problem with relocating incredibly expensive utilities. It doesn't seem to make any sense. Why don't we get to what I think is everyone's big issue, and certainly the legitimate issue? And that is, is a roundabout the appropriate mitigation for the high speeds that are currently on Village Boulevard? Number one, and I don't need to point this out to your group, you're incredibly experienced at this. We are only responsible as a developer for the impacts created by our proposed development. All of the testimony here tonight is that cars are already traveling fast on Village Boulevard. That has not been occasioned on this neighborhood by our proposed development. It already exists. So there is no rational nexus between the mitigation being requested and our proposed development. So legally, we can't pay for it. Legally, you can't ask us to pay for it. But there's clearly a problem. I think the city has a lot of solutions. There's a lot of traffic engineering solutions. They could pay for their own, you know, lane narrowing, roundabouts, chicanes, speed bumps, traffic tables. They could pay for their own roundabout. They could put police officers out there. They could put radar-enforced signs. There's a lot of things they could do, none of which is our legal responsibility, none of which can you legally impose on us. So with that said, maybe we should talk about what some of those solutions are. And by the way, all those interesting comp plan provisions up there really are not applicable, because the only applicable analysis, as this group well knows, when you are seeking a change in the flu, in the future land use amendment, is what is the current future land use amendment, or land use versus the proposed. So whatever it's currently vested with versus what we're asking for, that's the analysis. And that's the analysis that Mr. Hagan from Kimbley Horn did. And if you look at that, which is what we're legally supposed to look at, there's a reduction in the AM and PM peak trips. What staff presented to you is, while an interesting analysis, it's not the applicable one. It's today's use, the church, which is used on Sunday mornings versus our proposed development. And that is not the legal analysis that you undertake in a flu amendment. So of course, it's going to show there's almost no ADTs or AM and PM peaks on the weekdays because no one's using the church on the weekdays. But again, that's not the analysis. In fact, the correct analysis shows a reduction in that. So I'm not sure what the correct solution to the speed on Village Boulevard is. The only thing I'm sure of is it's not our responsibility. What is our responsibility is the safety of our anticipated residents. And that's why we need that right-hand decel lane. We will also voluntarily participate in any reasonable mitigation, such as what was suggested by former city commissioner Robinson, who very insightfully said, why don't you put one of those flashing, you know, curve ahead, slow down, intersection ahead? We should do that. And those are affordable solutions. A traffic signal unfortunately is not a solution because it will never warrant that. And one of the reasons it will never warrant it, which goes to my prior comment about the comp plan, is all of the traffic for this site was already considered and provided for thirty, forty years ago when Perini did this development. So imagine this big vacant church site, thirty acres of undeveloped land. It is entitled, gentlemen, with a certain number of vested trips. And the road and intersections already anticipated that, which is why our proposed development does not cause any intersection to fail, and doesn't cause the roadway to fail, because it was already completely vested when they engineered the road and the intersections to begin with. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. I don't know that I need to say more. Chris, did you want to add to it? He has a very detailed analysis, the applicable analysis of current flu versus proposed flu. And again, we can provide that to you. We can introduce it in the record, but it is a reduction in the AM and PM peaks. This has its county traffic concurrency TPS letter, causes no roadway or intersection to fail, again, because it was always engineered for in the original Perini development. We're just finally building it thirty or forty years later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we'll bring them back to the board for discussion. And let me just start on this, and why don't we just hear people's thoughts before we do any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, look, there's a couple of things that are clear to me here. One is that this project is very reasonable for this site. It's effectively an infill project in a developed area that has a suburban feel and an urban street. Two is that Village Boulevard is obviously poorly designed. It's not meeting the needs of the residents. It's distressing to the city. It's causing problems. My philosophical point here is that is not this owner's problem to fix, nor should Village Boulevard with this level of problem be fixed in a piecemeal way. So a thousand feet of twelve-foot or a roundabout here and there, patching this is not a good solution. This site has, is generating basically no revenue to the city right now from a real estate tax perspective. This density and this level of development is going to generate an enormous amount of revenue for the city, or hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more. It is the city's responsibility, with that taxpayer money, to build Village Boulevard the way it would like to be built over the course of time, that it can afford to do so. It is not this owner's responsibility to pay for Village Boulevard. So I really cannot support any condition whatsoever to change the traffic structure, either the roundabout or the sidewalk, when looking at this thing holistically, and all the dollars that are gonna be coming into the city that the city can then hopefully correctly use to fix this roadway, if it doesn't get held hostage by the county and have to send it all out to fix Jog Road. But don't, don't do this piecemeal, is my main, main point. I normally agree with the staff, almost everything that's brought in front of us, because they're very professional and very thoughtful, but I, I kind of virulently disagree with this, with these conditions, and will not support it with these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre.
Yeah, I'll echo the same thing that Mark said, so I'll leave it at that.
Peter.
Similarly, I don't have any issues with any of the waivers, the landscaping waivers. I mean, the three hot buttons, of course, the sidewalk, the DXL lane, and the roundabout. Those are the three that I have difficulty with. Not so much the right turn lane. I think that's, that's a necessity. Those are my three observations.
Todd. Todd.
I think that, you know, we've all heard the testimony from the residents, the staff, the applicant, that there is a traffic and speed problem on Village. Unfortunately, what I heard tonight, I think, was that there's basically unanimous opposition to a roundabout, even though that's our staff's recommendation, that that's probably the safest alternative for this project. Now, where I differ from maybe some of the other board members is, I do feel that the wider sidewalks is something that actually does happen piecemeal. It doesn't make any sense sometimes in the short term to build those things, but they tend to get developed as projects develop or redevelop, and are required to build those things. And then maybe the city comes in later and fills in the missing pieces as they can. So that is one of those things that, in my experience, does tend to happen more in a piecemeal fashion. And I'm not sure that just saying that the sidewalk is only a certain width today, going forward, there may be future projects that are required to build improvements that may end up connecting to that and improving the pedestrian accessibility along Village.
Thank you. For myself, first, I agree with everything Mark said. I really do. I also, though, think the city engineers are right to be focusing on the issues they're focusing on. I'm not sure what the right solution is. The roundabout is intriguing. I am -- I support their efforts to explore this. Obviously, though, there's not buy-in yet. And I wonder if a way we can maybe deal with this, I think we all agree there's a problem with traffic. Whether this project adversely affects it at all is something that can be discussed. I don't think it's unfair to ask an applicant who's seeking waivers from the city to maybe help contribute toward a resolution of a problem. I wonder if maybe one way we get consensus is simply to support this project, where I think there's strong support for, and on the issue of the traffic, maybe have the applicant and the city continue the discussions before it gets to the city commission, to see if maybe there is a resolution. I sort of agree. We don't want a piecemeal. I think there is a problem. I'm not sure we had a chance, it's not our role, but I'm not sure there's a chance to flesh out some of the maybe alternative solutions that may help alleviate the problem. What are your thoughts?
So I agree. Mr. Chairman, yes, we can, I think we should make the recommendation that they continue to work toward a broader solution for Village Boulevard. To the extent that this applicant can assist with that, that's great. But we have to be careful as we're moving through these four separate things.
I agree.
Because they buried the -- these conditions in 1841A, 16.1, and then in 1842A, 14.1 and 2. So we're going to have to be very methodical about how we --
I'm very comfortable with what you just proposed. I would say to the traffic engineers that there is a significant problem here, and some of your solutions may ultimately make the most sense, but this can't be done piecemeal. It may not be fair to impose on this particular applicant. Obviously, there's significant buy-in that has yet to occur for the residents most affected by it. So I think there's a process that today may have begun. I certainly support what Mark, what you're proposing. I don't know what your other --
I'd like to say something about one of the comments that Todd made about the widening of sidewalks happening now versus later. I do agree, but I don't think that the width that they're requesting them, the applicant, to do, 12 feet wide and a six-foot bumper, I think is way, way extreme. But I do agree it should happen on the front end of this.
Yeah, I also agree with what Todd said, that this is something, these are the correct goals for the city, but in this particular circumstance, it's, I'm struggling to see how that can occur without, but that may be a --
Well, it's definitely something that needs to be thought out a little further, not just, yeah, you need to be 10-foot or 8-foot, but, I mean, if there's a four-foot sidewalk to their north and then nothing to their south, and then there's a continuous sidewalk across the street --
But the argument, the argument on the other side is, that's how things exist today, but things change always, and if you don't do it now, let's say, for whatever reason, let's say some incredible developer comes through and gives you and your people so much money, you all sell. And they do a new project there. And then, and now they want this beautiful wide sidewalk, but now we're missing this link now, because a short-sided planning board missed that opportunity, is the argument.
I agree. I agree. But again, a 12-foot sidewalk, 12-foot wide sidewalk. Plus six.
Do you want to make a motion?
Because I have a feeling I'm going to --
Just to finish the thought of it, whoever wants to make it. I like what you're proposing, that we need to be clear what we're doing. But if you're comfortable, I'd like to make the recommendation that the conversations continue on ways the traffic can be dealt with. I'd fully support what you want with that condition. Peter, what are your thoughts? You said you're prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'm trying to understand what the issue is here. Are we talking about the sidewalk, or are we talking about the roundabout?
About all three, I think. Well, I shouldn't say that. You know.
Well, we know we need to, you know, there's 1841, which is the amendment to the map. That one's easy.
Yeah.
And the rezoning.
These are all separate motions, correct?
1841, 1841A are definitely --
Well, why don't we start with the, let's just take them sequentially, and let's do the best we can. Excuse me. Mr. Roach will break protocol and allow you to address this. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to clarify exactly what you were talking about, is that each item needs to be motioned upon individually. 1841, 1841A deal with the church. So the first being the future lane use map amendment, then being the rezoning to --
And there's no opposition on that from anyone on this board, correct? Why don't, why don't you begin with those, the low-hanging fruit, and we'll go from there?
All right. I'll move approval to case 1841 with one condition.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second? Oops. We have a thought from our council.
With the condition in the --
In the report. Yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next motion.
And the next one is, I move approval of case number 1841A with conditions from 1 to 15.2, excluding 16.
Okay. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next.
Next one. I move approval of case number 1842, and there are no conditions with this one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously.
We'd like to move approval of case 1842A, conditions 1 through 15, excluding 14.1. And 2, 14.2.
All right. Second. Is this the one where --
The roundabout.
A big pardon?
That's the path and the roundabout.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and second. Discussion. I would ask that you consider adding as part of the motion, you have a thought, Mark, what do you say? Yeah, okay. The idea that we would also recommend that the city and, we adopt it the way you're saying, but with the added recommendation that the city and applicant continue the discussions on ways the traffic can be addressed.
Oh, I thought we could do that at the end as a separate one, because --
As a, not as a separate motion, I think.
It would have to be, because here is very explicit, you know, so we --
Mr. Thomas, isn't, I thought you told us in the past, we can do that as part of this motion, or do you think it's best done as a whole separate motion?
You could do either. In this case, you're making a recommendation, which can be separate, it can stand alone, or --
Okay. Why don't we do it that way, then? All right.
So we're excluding basically 14.1 and 14.2.
But if you, are you intending to include 15? Because that is deleting the turn lane.
The proposed right turn lane?
Shall be removed.
Oh, sorry, 15, sorry. Include --
So you would omit 14.1, 14.2, and 15.
Okay. All right. That's the motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Now, for the record, what's excluded from the motion?
14.1, 14.2, and 15.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Then I'm looking for a motion, since I cannot make one. Mark, can you assist me on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we add a recommendation that the applicant and the city continue to discuss ways to mitigate traffic impact on Village Boulevard and look at the roadway holistically as a partnership. Thank you.
Have we a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
A question. On page 10, it's cases 1841A and 1842A, they have five different waivers regarding landscaping. Do you want to deal with that separately, or?
Wasn't that included?
No, I think they're covered under the request for the plan development, so.
We're good on that. All right.
None of them needed a separate finding, as in minimum lot acreage and so forth, so.
All right, thank you. We now move to planning board case number 692V, and there is, the applicant there is requesting continuance to the April 21 meeting. Does anyone have any objection to that request?
So moved.
So we have a motion to allow it. Have we a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, I understand from Ms. Van that we actually don't need to make a motion to continue the code revision case 2001, because there was, issue has to notice, whatever, so we'll just not proceed with that on the agenda. That moves us to other business, unfinished business, and we have one item under new business. I think, Mr. Piffco, you were saying something about?
Oh, well.
I was, is there, is there any way we can move away from getting paper?
Can we just get a PDF?
And just getting PDFs emailed to us?
Angela Van Panen, we could do that, but do you guys want to be able to review it at the meeting?
At the where?
At the meeting. See, if you've sent you the PDF of the plans.
Yeah. Yes, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with not having to look at it at meetings?
If you notice, we're not really reviewing them at the meeting.
I mean, we, I'm okay with just getting the book.
Okay, all right.
Tell you what, Angela, as a compromise, you can have one set. Should everybody want to review it?
Perhaps. That would be a good idea. They have a good compromise.
We just saved six trees.
Tonight.
Her meeting.
All right. Is there anything else for this board to discuss? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Good job. All right.